Good evening, it's 7:30, time to call our first regular council meeting of May. We need your order. We'll start out with the indication by Mr. Lynch and I believe this is his page. Good stand.
Dear God, we're always asking you to bless this country, and it's clear that you have blessed this country. But I have a tougher assignment for you tonight, God. I'm praying that you help bring this country together so that no longer are we the alt-right or the alt-left, but we're alt-Americans. God, no longer are we from red states or blue states, but we're more compromise, maybe even white states would be even better. So, God, I just pray all these things because that's the way that our country is going to be able to move ahead, do more things for our people, for the world, and for you. So, God, I pray all these things in the name of your Son, who taught us to love our enemies, even if they belong to the other political parties. I pray all these things in the name of your Son. Amen.
Amen.
Please, Pastor Sage, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Roll call, please.
Bernanda.
Yes.
Jennings.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Kristin.
Here.
Our next item is the approval of minutes for the Record Herald meeting on April 25, 2018. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
I want the motion to approve, Mr. Lynch.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Bernanda.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes.
Okay, communication, Mr. Lynch.
No.
Thank you. Report of council committee, I don't think there is either. There is either or looking.
They don't have any.
Reports of city officials. Mr. Lynch, standing.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the council members that participated in Arbor Day, coming out and supporting the tree committee like that. It's very well appreciated. I'd like to thank everybody that went to the Rotary Little League Fish Fry, because we know that that is the finest fish fry in the state of Ohio. Also, a number of you attended the National Day of Prayer. I went to the noon service, saw several of you. This year, the theme was unity, and I wanted to note the prayer for unity, and I thought it was exceptionally well done. I'd like to thank Pat Brinkman for her efforts. The students that were recently recognized by Rotary, I do indulge in pointing that out again. You had outstanding athletes, Katie Seifang, Jalen Mason, Service Above South, Charles Milstead, Maria Pickerel, outstanding scholar, Diamond Baker, Jordan Bernard, Tanner Bryant, Dylan Page, Gillian Solers, and Anthony from Washington City Schools. The scholarships recipients this year were Shay Puckett and Kenneth Arboletta, exceptionally nice young people whom the community should be very proud of. Would also like to thank the Record Herald for their recent article they ran about the Christman Award. I thought that was very appropriate. I think it's a wonderful way to remember the contributions of Clarence Christman and the continuing dedication of Mary Lou Haynes to our community, and I thought that article was exceptionally well done. Channel 3 is now found at 1021, in case you've been looking around, with the changes that have been made. And Harry, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. I would like to thank all the voters for the EMS levy. I would like to thank all involved with that issue, but in particular, I know that Dan Dean, Whitney Gentry, and Dale Lynch made a very nice effort there, and it is sincerely appreciated. The EMS system, that one system serves a county of our size very well. Certainly, it takes care of the needs of the City of Washington Courthouse and Union Township particularly well, and it allows a viable option for all of the townships, and we are just very pleased that that will continue on into the future. I would like to express goodwill to both Mrs. Moss Barger and Mr. Cool, and thank all the candidates that were recently on the ballot. Also, would like to announce that we have secured the OPWC portion of the funding for the Washington Avenue project in the sum of $1,222,286. You might recall, we had earlier funding by ODOT, that $1,222,286 is largely our local share. So, the only thing at the end of the project that we will pay for with local dollars is the engineering costs related to the project, which are still considerable, but it's nice to be able to spread that out. And the OPWC funding is in the form of, part of it's granted, part of it's a zero interest loan. Monday, the 14th, at 8:30, we will go on a roadshow to Bel Air. And just to make sure that we do everything properly, can I have a motion and a second that we hold our next meeting on Monday, the 14th, at 8:30 at Bel Air?
I would move that we have a meeting Monday, 14th, 8:30, at Bel Air. One second.
Roll call, please.
Bernanda.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes.
And even though we are now enjoying spring, for the first time in the year, really, the new legislation simply allows us to competitively bid rock salt to participate in the ODOT program, which has served us very well. Unfortunately, in the nice weather of the year, we do have to point out to you that you'll have winter again, but it is nice to have that done, taken care of, and all put away, and that simply allows us to participate in the program. And that is all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Damm? Thank you, Mr. Damm. Mr. Ryan.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Casey.
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
Local residents and taxpayers, first on the list, Mr. Hazelbaker.
My name is Rose Hazelbaker, and I live here at Stan High Street here in this city. Mr. Chairman and members of council, I have a couple of questions, and then I also would like to know if we can do something here. First of all, I'm thinking, if you go down 41, and you're getting up to the light there at the point, and you look over to the right, and you see this beautiful house with this grass growing up all around it, is that our best foot forward to anyone coming into the city? It's my understanding that Sonic has bought that property. Will they be keeping up the grounds? Do you know?
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
I asked Rod the other day to get in contact with Sonic, because we've noted the grass also. Rod has done that, and he gave them a couple of landscape contractors that would be happy to go mow their grass.
Wonderful, thank you. My next question is, I would like to see Joe, quite frankly, or someone from the city, go on FAD Focus and maybe even have some, in the Record Herald, about the ordinances that we have here for the summer. As a watch captain down on High Street, I can tell you, you would be surprised how many people who move into the city, they don't have a clue that we have a leash law, they don't have a clue that they have to mow the grass, they just don't have a clue. And I would like to see, in the summer, you know, a thing, an update, as to, this is kind of what we do to make sure everybody is on the same page. So, if, you know, Joey, you think about maybe going on to FAD Focus and kind of updating people, these are the things we like for you to do and appreciate it, and I think it'd save a lot of paperwork and a lot of, because, you know, we have, down in my neighborhood, we have McClendon's, we've been, how many years have we been mowing their lawn? You know? These people are chronic, they know it, they need to be raising the price on them every time they don't mow. I mean, we're talking people who know better. Another thing I wanted to say was, down on Arbor Street, and I give Joe an awful lot of credit on this one, we had a house who was ready to be condemned. I mean, it was so bad, there were like 30 cats, and it was just a total mess. Ryan Bowman bought that property, and it just sold to a couple. The lady works at Trends, their names are Wilson, they're wonderful people. It's the most beautiful house on the street. If you go inside, you think you're in one of those off of the, the show that used to be on TV years ago, where they go and they have, they give somebody a gorgeous house. The inside of this looks like that. We can't be happier down on High Street about this, because it brought the value of everybody's property up. I mean, we are just so thrilled with these people coming here, because we have a really nice family moving in. And I want to specifically say thanks to Joe, because he really did the extra mile in getting that taken care of. Having said that, there's some drainage issues behind those properties, which kind of comes through Mr. Pitt's decks and down through there. It is where the old trail was, the old county trail. You know what I'm talking about, Joe? The old county trail, where the tile, the tile's all broken up in there, and it's causing a lot of issues. It's got a little sister-in-law, what I call sister-in-law, and I, Martin's, I'm talking about. And when the rain gets in, it floods everybody's yard back in there, and floods out all their basements, and it's just a matter of putting some tile in and stopping it. So, maybe if somebody could look at that sometime. I think one of the ladies on my street called you and had you come and look, because they were worried about sod being put on that property.
Yes.
And I looked at it, and quite frankly, for me, you know, and you know I know a lot about graphics, I didn't see a problem, okay? I did not see a problem at all with that graphics, because if you've ever been to that property we're talking about here, it's all downhill in the back, where the water's going to come in, you know what I'm talking?
I know what you're talking.
So, the water's going to come in there and runs off into the ditch. That's where it goes. The last thing I want to talk about here is the van shell. What was it, 11, 12 years ago? How long you been here, Joe? Was it like the first year you were here?
Oh, probably closer to 15.
Yeah. David Hammond and Rollo Martin came up to a service meeting, and they were talking about putting a van shell in, and pops would come two, three, four times a year for us here in Courthouse. I'd like you to really start to looking at that again. Number one, we don't have any things for the kids to really do that is what I call progressive. I lived in Texas for years, and there was a minister out there who decided on a program, a positive program for the kids, instead of a negative one, of just putting them in jail with some other kids and being worse. And what he did was, they had like a stage, and what they did was, they wrote their own scripts, did their own plays, we're talking about everything, from tickets to scenery to everything. And then, if they did, ran it like a business. The money they made out of it, they did the next one on it, and they did the next one on it. And I would really like our city and the court system to take a good look at this program, because it really works. In that particular city, they had a very low crime rate, and I'm talking about drugs and the whole thing, because they were too busy. They were thinking about doing something for their community, they were proud of their self for all the work they had done. I mean, just to know you wrote a play, and it's on, everybody's coming to read it, you know, see it. I would really like you to think about that van shell. I think that van shell can be funded, not by the city, but by, you know, I'm pretty good at fundraising. I think that we could fundraise that, if you people would really think about having that. I don't know where you would put it now, but could you put it out by YMC or?
Yeah, with something you could physically, yeah, you could physically fit something out there, not a problem.
But with pops and everything, you would have, you know, like the, bring your picnic lunch, you know, whatever, and then the kids would have it for concerts, and then they would also have it for their place. And there was something about, I mean, I work with a lot of children, I know Mr. Lynch has too, you know what I'm saying? When kids know that they're being, when they know they're writing that script, they're not writing Bye Bye Birdie, you know what I mean? They're writing something that's really about them and how they feel and how their world's going. So, I really want you to think about that for the young people. I really think it's a good idea, and it wasn't mine, it was just that it actually works for another community, and so.
Can I ask a question? Do you have the name of that?
Bristol.
Huh?
Bristol, Texas.
Oh, Bristol, Texas, okay.
Mm-hmm. And if you need the address of the minister, I can get that for you, too.
Sure.
Because it really works out there.
Yeah.
So, I just want you guys to really think about doing the van shell, because the van shell's gonna pull the neighbor, pull our community together in different ways, you know, and I know, I go to pops every time they come in, so just think about that. And, I don't know, get ahold of Rollo or somebody, you know, that's still working on our jail, he probably knows what's going on with them, just, has he said anything to you? Have you heard anything from that?
Not recently, no, we haven't talked about that. That, they were using funds from the Port Harlow estate to pay to bring the pops to the county fair. How much of those funds are remain, I really, I can't tell you.
Well, see, I think we did do a lot of the private funding, I think if we talked to Van Rovey, he'd even help me get on that, because you know Ben was pretty supportive of that.
Yes.
And so, we, I think we could get a lot of the business people to really support that. Okay, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Blair, you're up.
Name is Jim Blair, some of you know me, I've been bred and born here in Fayette County, so I'm familiar with a lot of the issues that have been going on. I want to thank you.
Do you have your address for the Record?
Oh, the address, 1118 Golf View Drive. You're welcome.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Well, that's okay, I still got a little focus left in my mind. That's why I got notes, Jim. Used to be I could memorize all this, but I gotta have notes now.
I have them all right.
I had it on computer, to say so.
You do have them.
Drive, no cursive, not anymore. But I do want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity this evening to address you about an issue of concern, I think, for all of us, and that is the word transparency. We're all aware of the claims by almost every politician that they are all transparent. How many times we've heard that? However, in the current political climate, we find that this is not the case. Things have been and are still being kept from we, the people, just watch the news every night. Bringing it back to locally, I would like to see city councils set an example by allowing their constituents to feel council is being truly transparent and open in all their dealings. Recent events involving council and members of the community should prompt council to be proactive instead of being reactive. I feel that if you enact certain policies right now, you can help eliminate, or at least lessen, the chance of citizens making a circus of your meetings. I have spoken with two members of council here as to possible solutions that I felt may help the problem, and this evening, I understand that this was addressed in one of your committee meetings, but apparently nobody liked the idea, but I still want to address the whole council and just to see if there's some possible common ground that we can come up with on this. In this advanced age of technology, I cannot see any reason why council and departmental meetings could not be streamed live, either from a city Facebook page or from a city YouTube account. Now, I don't consider myself being computer savvy, but even I have set up a Facebook and YouTube account for $0. All it takes is a camera, a computer to download or stream the meetings, and access to the One councilman I spoke with mentioned something about council has been working with and even donating money to an enterprise called Channel 3 on cable. It would be interesting to see what the owners of this cable channel have been doing with our money, as I certainly haven't seen anything concrete coming from this venture that has been ongoing for many years. One problem with that is not everyone has cable. YouTube or Facebook would encompass a far greater viewing audience at a very minimal cost, and I'm certain the city has an IT person or department which they already pay, which could easily set this up. Broadcasting the meetings would meet a couple of needs. First, it would eliminate the need for persons to come in and broadcast from their cellphones, which elicits comments from those both sympathetic and opposed to their agenda. It could also be a lesson in how our government works or doesn't work for our high school students. I see this as a potential tool for teachers to use to teach their students about the finer points of how our government works. You won't get many students or taxpayers to come to a meeting, but you could get a lot of them to log on and watch the proceedings. Also, it would truly allow each of you members to be transparent, and the public can see if you are upholding the promises you made while you were running for office. Perhaps it could even drum up more interest in our local politics and possibly even have an impact on our voter turnout. We sure could use more participation, couldn't we, after 25% of the county voted in a perfect weather-wise day yesterday? The attitude of some former and current city officials, and I've heard this practically all my life, has been, well, if they want to know what's going on, they can come to the meetings. Well, I would like to suggest a change and see you implement a new policy which would take the council meetings to the people. When other communities see you being proactive, implementing and using smart technology, it may elicit questions from them and give us some positive publicity. I look forward to your response to the suggestion in the future, and thank you again for allowing me to address you this evening.
May I just ask?
Yes.
One thing is, is that, thank you for coming out, because, you know, I think, obviously it's been a big topic on my mind, but I would like to say something on behalf of some of my other colleagues here to my left and to my right. You know, I think that one thing that happens is that, you know, we definitely want to see the transparency happen, and a lot of times this doesn't come through on the other hand whenever I advocate for, you know, what I would like to see come through, but it's not that they don't want a lot of these transparency things, too. It's that, you know, there's a lot more complex, you know, understanding decisions that they have to have first, I think, if I'm not getting too out of line here, just to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward. Part of that is that, for example, and I talked with Harry and David, I think that what you're seeing with the microphone from you, which is the first time, I think, on podium, right? That is, I know, recorded, and then we've got that, which is new, so that we can get those on YouTube. Actually, they said that was a plan of theirs to get those on YouTube and actually do some more spotlight on some businesses. So, we are taking, I do want to say on behalf of some of my colleagues here, we are taking some steps. I would like one of that Johnny Lee, you know, not the states on that of, you know, the Trump's speech, but, you know, while we wish for Johnny Lees, sometimes we have to take these small steps, and I would like to take the time to gesture goodwill to just say that as well to my colleagues. But you are absolutely right, you're absolutely right, and we do need the live participation. That's how we're going to get more people in, because sometimes they don't have, you know, the schedule where at this point in time, they're free. You know, I know that, you know, we're all, we're all busy, and we don't have a situation where every single, you know, second, fourth Wednesday, or the occasion whenever we meet in Bel Air at 8:30, that we can just be there and be as engaged as we really need to in the government, in a government who really look at that philosophically and have our founding fathers' minds for the American system to work and participate and be a thing of we, the people, like you said. So, I'm really inspired, yeah, and I know that we've spoken before briefly, and I really appreciate you coming in and saying these things again, so I know I went on a little longer than I would like, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. You're welcome. Moving into legislation previously introduced, I'd make a resolution number R10-2018 on second reading.
I move to place resolution number R10-2018 on second reading.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Bernanda.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes.
Resolution number R10-2018, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Dennis, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, the equipment of Mr. David Fish to the Board of Zoning Appeals for our term concluding December 31, 2021.
Move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Bernanda.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes.
Resolution number R11-2018, a resolution expressing the opposition of the City Council of the City of Washington Courthouse to the State of Ohio, collecting local tax revenues on behalf of local governments, and distributing those local tax revenues back to local governments.
Go here, motion for adoption.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Bernanda.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes.
Resolution number R11-2018, a resolution expressing the opposition of the City Council of the City of Washington Courthouse to the State of Ohio, collecting local tax revenues on behalf of local governments, and distributing those local tax revenues back to local governments.
Go here, motion for adoption.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Bernanda.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes. New legislation in writing, resolution number R12-2018, first reading.
I move that we place resolution number R12-2018 on first reading.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bernanda.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes. New legislation in writing, resolution number R12-2018, first reading.
I move that we place resolution number R12-2018 on first reading.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bernanda.
Yes.
Jennings.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Kristin.
Yes.
Resolution number R12-2018, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Dennis, City Manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purchase of Wall Highway Rock Salt.
Next, on the agenda is Mr. Lemon, this is Bernanda, the first of you.
Um, to Mr. Blair, I totally agree. Unfortunately, what I've learned in this position... Unfortunately, what I've learned in this position is things don't move as fast as I want it to. I'm a very high-energy, always constantly moving, never sitting down kind of person. So it's something I've learned in the few years that I've served, but I know that Harry has been determined that this is going to work and going forward and so sometimes it just doesn't go as quickly. So be patient with us, we'll get it there, I promise. Then the other thing is, up to Rose, is, um, great idea, again. It has been on my to-do list. Something to that nature, something that everyone can enjoy. Not necessarily, I didn't think about the kids, but, um, I think that's a good opportunity. So, um, but in the meantime, and this is kind of my little plug here for downtown, but downtown, I don't know how many are aware, but we've created the Main Street Fayet. Remember, you're new here tonight, so I'm going to tell you that. Main Street Fayet is now on Facebook. It is a group of business owners. We have elected officials, we are running meetings very efficiently. And we have accomplished a ton in just a few meetings. So I'm very, very proud of the group of businesses downtown. Our first event is this weekend for Mother's Day. So if you haven't went out to like that page, please do. We have a second event Memorial Day. Third event is in June, Ice Cream Social. So there will be things for kids to do. We've talked about how do we involve high school students, um, art-wise, um, music-wise. So there are going to be opportunities, but again, it just takes a little bit longer than, you know, because we all have jobs, unfortunately, in addition to this. So, but, um, definitely if you don't, haven't liked the Main Street Fayet, please do that. There is a wonderful calendar event that's getting ready to be released. We're waiting for approval from all members right now, but we have something scheduled at least once a month from now till December and possibly in most months, two items a month happening downtown. So we are working very hard to provide opportunities for people to feel that community, um, and join downtown with the heart of it, so thank you.
Thank you. Caleb, you're up.
I'll, I'll pass since I said so much to, uh, Mr. Blair, but I repeat them here.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch.
Yes, I have a saying tonight for one of my favorite people who isn't living any longer, but he's still one of my favorite writers, Matt Ziegler. And Zieg said, "It's what you learn after you know it all." That counts. And I have found in my life, uh, when you think you know it all, you don't. And so, um, I have learned from that myself and I think it's a good thing to learn from. Other than that, I'm enjoying the weather and I would like to take credit for at least two of those students, Mr. Devon said, because I had them in class this year, but I think I'd like to give more credit to their parents and, uh, anyway. That's it, Mr. V, uh, Mr. Chris.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Uh, Mr. Blair, I mostly agree with you, but I grew up in a third world country where the state owns the communications and they have their own apparatus set up. And so I think we have to be careful with us getting all, all of our information from our, from us, from, from the city and so on. We have the radio here, we have the newspaper here and, uh, we've had in the past people with the camera and, and, uh, we've been scrutinized and we, we leave our meetings open for, for other means than just the traditional, uh, record herald and W C H L. But I, I think we have to be careful. If the city has a website, uh, it's still going to take some input from the public to keep it honest and to keep it from becoming a propaganda machine, so. I appreciate what you said, don't get me wrong, but, but I think there's, there's two sides to that, so.
Thank you, Charles. Thank you, Sharon.
You know, I feel the same way, the transparency thing, you know, we, I think we're getting more and more to that point with the camera behind me right here. That's the kind of thing that we talk about, of course, the newspaper here, the radio and everything, so. The Facebook thing, I have to think about that for a while. That one, that one would take me a little thought first. But other means, I don't mind at all. I think we should be, uh, both sized and put these things out. But on a lighter note, today I did something kind of fun. I joined, I went to a place called Bonnie Brook Country Farm. Don't you know some, we've been there? You know, we, we planted sunflower seeds, we learned about horses, we played on a playground, we ate lunch at a tables next to a big barn, we, uh, petted animals and it was a lot of fun. We learned a lot and by the way, the kids had fun too, so. You know, my girlfriend, Jack was with me and he had a lot of fun also. So that, uh, that is what I did today. But the other thing is, is I'm being very transparent what I did today. So, but these are things that we have to stop and think about, you know, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, had a full day.
I had a full day, I did, I had a full day.
Thank you. Mr. Jennings, I know you hate to go last because everybody's already said what you want to.
You know what he wants to say.
I just, I was prepared, each and every one of them just happened to have one of them.
Well, that's what happens.
So I'm just coming back downtown and I, I really enjoy seeing the colorful banners of the branches of the military and honoring those people in the military and also the lovely banners that welcome the Washington Courthouse. And I just think that adds a lot of, a lot of warmth and proper admiration and, and especially for visitors. Of course, the other problem is if you're driving, trying not to get hit to go see too much. Nonetheless, I really like seeing all those downtown. Looks, looks just terrific with everything else that's downtown, always looks very nice, so thank you.
I think I'll join in with Caleb and Skip saying that. It's all pretty much been said, thank you. How about a motion for adjournment? Roll call, please.
Fernando?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hopp?
Yes.
Chris.
One thing, thanks to all the, to all the people that came and hope they enjoy it and they can come back and visit again. Can you explain that for me, uh, just for, uh, Janice?